Calling tonight's Winchester about the school regular business meeting of October 27th, 2025 in order. Ms. Clerk, we call the roll. Here.
Mr. Allen.
Here.
Ms. Harris. And Professor Chris Gonzalez. Tom Hall.
Yes.
Ms. Harrow. Here. Professor Henry.
Alright, so we'll move to belief statements and pledge of allegiance. Skip?
We believe that every student has the right to an excellent education in a safe, experiential and imaginative learning environment. Every student deserves equitable opportunities to learn, grow, lead and serve. Intentional focus on future-ready skills, dispositions integrated with essential academic knowledge develops and empowers a 21st century graduate. Mental, emotional, physical health are essential conditions for optimal learning.
We believe that collective efficacy and shared accountability are vital ingredients to a productive empowered workforce. Winchester Public Schools must be learner-centered, agile and courageous in modeling the power of public education across our Commonwealth, country and world. A vibrant public education system positively impacts the social, economic and civil well-being of Winchester. Embracing the diversity of our students, their family and our community is the strength that unifies us. To achieve equity, we must clearly define and monitor the extent to which all learners and groups are empowered through access, diversity and inclusion.
Please rise for the pledge. Pledge of Allegiance.
I am a United States citizen. The United Republic of America, a nation under God and the principle of the great justice of our home.
Alright, moving on, Chairman's comments. He's not here tonight, but I want to acknowledge a lot of death around Winchester lately. Mary, our condolences to you. I had a bus driver this week and his family just been like three funerals in like four days and it sucks. That's my comment of the evening. Jason's not here, so. Jen?
No, I just want to thank you, Mr. Burgenoff, for recognizing those losses. That's all my comments.
I'll just second your guys' sentiments and as a parent, you know, it makes you want to hold your kids a little bit tighter. Make sure you give them that kiss that they're asking for every night and my heart goes out to everybody for their loss.
I also wanted to thank John Kerr for hosting us last week for a school visit. The school visits are one of the high points of the activities we get to do on the board and I'm always so grateful for that. And my kids attend John Kerr and it was really meaningful to see the students, all of them engaged in active learning. And that's something that I love when I visit each and every one of the schools, so I'm looking forward to visiting. You're all at school soon too.
Alright, the Asher training on 10-4 was an experience that will stay with me for a long time. The anxiety was real and I can only imagine how frightening it must feel for our students in an actual situation. Hearing the sound of officers running and yelling in the hallways, the walkie-talkies echoing and people calling for help made it all very real. As we participated, I thought a lot about our most active students, those who struggle with movement and focus even on a regular day. The anxiety and stillness required during lockdown training would be especially hard for them. So we need to make sure that our emergency preparedness plans account for all types of burdens and personalities. Preparation isn't about protoc- just isn't. Preparation isn't just about protocols, it's about understanding how each child might respond and ensure staff are equipped to help them manage fear and stay safe. When the police entered the room with guns drawn, shouting commands like "Hands on your head," it was a little unsettling, but it also underscored the seriousness and necessity of this type of preparedness. We hope and pray we never have to face a real event, but training like this helps ensure that if we ever do, everyone knows what to do. I also understand now the importance of the messaging that goes out to parents reminding them not to go to school during a crisis. Hearing the communication on hold and feeling the uncertainty made me realize how critically clear timely information is for both families and staff. As we moved to the reunification site, the sense of relief began to sink in. Hearing calm voices again over the radio, seeing students waiting safely in the auditorium, it provided reassurance and hope. This experience reminded me how vital it is to take these trainings to different schools so each staff and student body can understand their unique building layout and practice the proper protocols. While I truly hope we never have to experience such a real situation, I'm deeply grateful for the preparation and bravery of our officers and the care of our educators who put student safety first every single day. Thank you.
I agree. Thanks, Ms. Harris. Stuart, anything? Alright guys, you're up.
At Daniel Morgan Intermediate, October has been a productive and exciting month as the generals continue to stretch beyond in both learning and leadership. The first quarter concluded with notable literary achievements. Sixth grade students completed their novel study of Percy Jackson while fifth grade finished Walk Two Moons engaging in meaningful discussions, celebration and creative projects. In history, students deepened their understanding of colonial trade through interactive simulation activities that made economic concepts both engaging and memorable. Looking ahead, the school is preparing for the upcoming PBIS Bowling Day, an event designed to recognize and reward students for their exemplary behavior and attendance. At Garland Quarles, students and staff are participating in Red Ribbon Week, dress-up days to promote drug prevention and encourage healthy, drug-free choices. Last week was especially eventful as the school launched its after-school remediation program to support academic and attendance goals for third and fourth grade students, which we plan to expand in the spring. Chameleon Clubs also began offering opportunities such as swim club, chameleon choir and basketball club. Parent-teacher conferences had an excellent turnout where students proudly shared their learning progress and goals with their families. To celebrate Hispanic Heritage Month, the school enjoyed a performance by Folklore S. Vida and treats from Sugar Creek Ice Cream. The Smile Squad continued to boost staff morale with themed food days including National Apple Day, International Grazing Day and National Taco Day. Additionally, Garland Quarles helped host a successful and engaging Division-wide Super Sleuth Literacy Night at Daniel Morgan Intermediate in collaboration with Jamie Woodhull and Winchester Public School staff. At Frederick Douglass Elementary, they had an excellent turnout at last week's parent-teacher conferences. Students and staff participated in a variety of engaging activities to celebrate Hispanic Heritage Month, highlighted by a school-wide assembly organized by their international teachers.
At Virginia Avenue, students participated in several field trips to local places, including the Museum of Shenandoah Valley, West Oaks and the Voistrikov Ballet Academy. They also celebrated winning the September Attendance Challenge with Kona Ice again and the school participated in the Division Literacy Night at Daniel Morgan Intermediate School and held student-led conferences. They also hosted the Academic Review Team for a week and a consultant from Solution Tree for PLCs for a day. John Kerr, they were honored to host a visit from the school board members and the superintendent last week. The school is preparing for its Veterans Day Celebration on November 11th, which will be held in conjunction with the Hanley High School Band. They are also preparing for its Wonka Kids Production on November 20th. At Daniel Morgan Middle, students participated in student-led conferences, sharing their academic progress and goals with their family and report cards were shared with families to show progress towards semester grades as well. The school celebrated Red Ribbon Week with themed days and activities promoting healthy choices. A spirited pep rally was held to end the quarter highlighting school pride and student achievements. Eighth graders attended the World of Work Field Trip to explore various career paths and local opportunities. The music department held a combined high school and middle school band concert. The band in Coles gave special performances for visiting fourth grade students. At Hanley, after talking with Mrs. Brathwaite, the school is very proud of their behavior data that has just recently been formed and we can see in major referrals, those numbers are going down from last year and in minor referrals, those numbers are going down just as much as last year, which is great to see. The play is also coming up, Frozen, and the Winchester Education Foundation is gonna speak there as well about their new auditorium updates that hopefully will happen soon.
Thanks guys, appreciate both of you. Alright, Dr. Pluska, I think it's your turn to shine here.
Well, I'm gonna let the kids shine tonight. So, we have for you, we're gonna set up stations and you all get to join and I'm gonna have the kids run the stations. So, we're gonna start with the academics and I'm just gonna tell you where everybody's gonna be, so when I call your name, come on up. Let me have Dahlia Brown and Pedro Baltista Domingo. They're gonna be at this table and they're gonna show you how we partner read every day. Then also at this table, I'm gonna have Malachi Gates and Elisa Rivera Cruz and they're gonna share their research papers that they have just done through our Bookworms curriculum. At the next table, we have a STEM activity and some Virginia Studies stuff as well for STEM. Violet Richards and Mila Baylor are coming up, they're gonna be on this side. For our Virginia Studies, we have Emmett Stell and Xavier Staub. They're gonna be on the other side where the pizza boxes are, don't get excited, we did not bring snacks. And then on this side, we have our math and because we are half dual-language, half of our school is math and Spanish, half in English. So on the English side, I have Devon Wright and Jaquan Richardson. They're gonna show you an activity in math. And then on the Spanish side, we have Louis Jarrett and Cameron Carter and we have Shayla Diaz-Pinado who is going to help with any Spanish that we need help with. So what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna number you guys off, you two are also gonna be involved because then it's an even number. So you're gonna be one, two, three, one, two, three, one, two, three. And so we're gonna start, we're gonna have three minutes at each table, that's it. You have two activities in three minutes, so you're gonna have to keep going, I got a timer and everything, so it's just like when you're in school. So the ones are gonna start at this table, the twos are starting at this table and the threes are starting here. If you'll notice at the top of the sign, I've got the order that you're gonna go in next and you're just gonna go in a clockwise rotation. So let's see how well you do as school board members and representatives to get to the table appropriately. Alright, here we go. Hold on. Alright, time is up for the first station. I know you don't want to leave, but there's good stuff coming, I promise. Yep. Let's get through the. How's it going? Five seconds, one more rotation, five seconds. And we're done. Alright, go ahead and go to your next station. Uh-oh. Yes, it is time to switch. Oh yeah, sorry, I will not touch it. Let you bring it up. Thank you. Perfect, thanks. Alright, time is up. Before we do anything else, I really do think that the kids deserve a round of applause. And the parents for bringing them, thank you, appreciate it, yes. So that's the biggest portion that I wanted to talk about because we have the three buckets like we always do. So it's academics, attendance and PBIS. So attendance, we're just very proud, we won the attendance challenge for the whole month of September. We continue to call parents, we incentivize school attendance for students. They get extra points days before a long or before or after a long weekend. We started our after-school tutoring, says last week, but I did it last week, so it was the week before that, two weeks ago. So October 14th, we started that and that's for attendance and academics both. And then PBIS, we have our quarterly PBIS celebrations, our weekly visits to the PBIS cart and our monthly MTSS meetings. Our first quarterly celebration will be October 31st. And it's a teacher versus student dance-off, so in case you're wondering. It's also rock painting if they're interested in that or choice activities. And then community partnerships, I just wanted to highlight the bike bus is still going strong. We started our bike garden, so we have the road. We have some money coming in for donations to continue that, to get the students artwork actually painted on the blacktop as well if you feel like you would like to donate for anyone that's in the room. And we are also offering Bike Club after school on Tuesdays to help encourage that as well. We had our lunch on the lawn in September, it was a huge event, it always is, it's a lot of fun, one of my favorite days. We still work with Bright Futures, Connected Communities, the National Counseling Group, the Discovery Museum, the Winchester PD. We try to get as many local partnerships as we can. And that is all of my presentation, any questions?
I don't have a question, my wife asked if she could come learn to ride her, but she's got a bike.
Yes.
Learn from your students.
We do Tuesdays.
She literally brought that up today, yes.
Uh-huh, Tuesdays, after school, you tell her just come right on over, we'll put her right in there.
Mine needs some training wheels on that thing, but we'll get it.
Well, we'll see what we can do.
Alright.
Anything else for me?
I just want to say how much I enjoyed the showcase. I loved how the students were actively leading with minimal to no help from the teachers and I also loved how the math and English section had a Spanish part, although some of us did, you know, struggle a little bit. But that's okay, I really loved the showcase, I have to say, it's been my favorite showcase so far since I've been on the school board.
Well, thank you, I'm just very proud of our kids and I wanted you all to see how hard they work and what great kids we have at Virginia Avenue, it's a wonderful school.
And if I can just add, that is something that I was thinking about as we've gone to a couple of different schools. I really, really appreciate how you integrate the students and kind of give them that leadership piece. My daughter last year got to give the school board a tour and she just felt so proud and came home just beaming and really excited. And I know that this year's fourth graders were probably super excited to do that. So I really appreciate and I respect that you put them in positions where they can feel proud of themselves because they really should be proud of themselves. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Alright, the SBA Academy Awards, Ms. Buckley. Yeah, if anyone wants to leave now, like feel free, yeah. I mean, if you want to hang around and watch a bunch of boring stuff, that's cool too, but. I mean, if you want to hang around and watch a bunch of board and stuff, that's cool too, but, yeah. Alright, Ms. Buckley, your turn.
I thought this recognition was deserving of me standing at the podium. Um, I'm honored to recognize three school board members tonight. Um, board members are encouraged, um, by the VSB A Board of Directors to further their education in boardmanship skills and curriculum. And we have three that obtained fifteen-plus hours, so they are being recognized today for their commitment and engagement in that education. And, um, the three that I have, and I have to think about really quickly, the fifteen hours makes me think of college. So I'm like, oh my gosh, that would have been a semester of work, so good for you all. Um, and I'll bring these to you, um, I have one for Melissa Harris, Stuart Island, and I think it's Mike, oh Ben Rothenmel. So I'm going to bring these to you all, congratulations to you and we appreciate, um, your time commitment to this, um, to these, this education. We feel it's important and we know you've learned a lot because you've brought a lot back to us, ideas and such that you've learned at these, so thank you for that.
Alright, we are now on to three A, which is request for citizens to speak. And as always, I'll read the, the statement for that. Persons of groups appearing before the score must state their name and address for the record. If representing a group, the name of the group shall be stated. Individual speakers shall limit their comments to three minutes per meeting. Speakers representing a group shall limit their comments to five minutes. We have set aside thirty minutes for public participation portion of our meeting and speakers will speak based on the order in which they signed up. Speakers are not permitted to campaign for public office or promote private business ventures, use profanity or vulgar language, make comments about a public official or an employee that are not related to their official duties, make comments that violate the privacy of any employer or student, engage in behavior that disrupts or the meeting or intimidates others, or address the school board on issues that not, that do not directly concern the services, policies, or responsibilities of the school board. As a general rule, the school board will not respond to public comment at the time that it is presented. And I've got one signed up here, Sherry Hutton, sorry if I screwed your name up, but... And just remember, please speak your name and address for us.
Okay, so that's my nine-year-old. Uh, my name is Sherry Hutton and I live at nine sixty-two North Raddick Street. And I'm standing before you today to talk about, um, it, more training for teachers or at least one teacher or counselor at each school. So I have currently three kids that are in three different public Winchester public schools. I have one at Virginia Avenue, one at Daniel Morgan, and one that's currently a tenth grader at, um, John Hanley. Um, all three of my children have, um, a special education plan and, um, two are taking off like a rocket. I have one, my oldest, she wants to actually be a special education teacher. Um, she is going for advanced diploma and she does have an IEP planned. She's also A and B on, uh, student. I have an eleven-year-old that is currently at Daniel Morgan Intermediate, who is autistic. Um, and it's pertaining more to him than my other two, but I also know that there's other children that probably could benefit from this and teachers. Uh, it's called the CIT training, it's for like, um, it's the crisis intervention training to help de-escalate situations that could, can happen, have, or to just help them like feel better about themselves and that they're in a safe, um, environment. And I know that honestly, I know that my child would have benefited from that, um, having that inside the school. I know that first responders do have it and I feel like teachers are on, honestly, first responders because that's who lays the foundation. I know as parents, we lay foundations, but when they come to school, you, the foundation for a safe environment while in school is with the teachers, the principals, and they, and the counselors. And I've noticed a lot of times the kids are disas- disassociating with the teachers because they don't feel safe. Some don't feel safe because there's situations that happen and they're like, who do I turn to? I have nobody to talk to, what do I do, what do I do? And having one person trained in it that can help them, a counselor, because a counselor can help in all areas of stress or depression or anxiety, which is, if you notice, is very highly, like, is strong now. Um, grief, I think honestly that would really help with our current situation, especially when the resources outside of school is very slim for mental health issues, especially for our children. Or even children that are, I'm sorry. Um, that are unable to, um, have access to the resources due to insurance issues. So having that inside of school would prob, would be, um, a blessing to a lot of parents. I know for my oldest, I have a twenty-year-old too, it would have been a blessing to have, um, an intervention of that sort to help her with her crisis.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here that hasn't signed up that would wish to speak tonight? Hearing none, we'll move on, um, to the consent agenda, which you guys have all seen, so entertain a motion on that one.
Motion to approve consent agenda items as presented.
Second.
We had a motion by Mr. Allen and a second by Ms. Harris, I believe. Madam Chair, sorry, or Madam Clerk? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, see this where you bride, you know what I'm saying? Alright, moving on, uh, five A, annual equity report, Dr. Walker?
Good evening, it's my pleasure to present to you the annual equity report for year, um, school year twenty-four, twenty-five for Winchester Public Schools. The annual equity report is based on policy AH equity and has six components on which I am to report back to you as far as data is concerned. And the six areas are there before you, culturally responsive instruction, professional development, youth leadership and stewardship, family engagement, diverse recruitment, and reducing disparities and opportunity gaps. I will say to you that the majority of the information for this particular, this particular presentation has been extracted from the Panorama Education Survey for students that they take in the spring of each year. So the first area that we want to discuss is culturally responsive instruction. And historically, we've used the measurement on the Panorama data for cultural awareness and action. We did not collect data in the spring of twenty-twenty-five, we will continue that collection in the spring of twenty-twenty-six. One thing I do want to point out to you before we proceed with the rest of the data is that all of the Panorama responses are based upon positive responses. And so, for example, in FY twenty-four, fifty-nine percent of the students, grades six through twelve, who responded to this particular, uh, part of the Panorama survey, um, fifty-nine percent said that they do, they positively responded that they discussed this particular area often in their school. So as we move forward for the rest of the, uh, information that we discuss this evening, I will always be sharing with you the positive response totals. For this particular, um, culturally responsive instruction measurement that we are looking at, it is about, uh, curricular, curriculum documents and professional development as far as PBL learning experiences and then, uh, the curriculum writers who have had at least two hours of culturally responsive instruction training per year. Now for the, um, PBL project-based learning experience, sixty-five percent of the curriculum um, continues to have project-based learning experiences that did not increase or change from last year or decrease, it just didn't change um, because it's been consistent, um, from, for the last two years. And then the number of WPS curriculum writers who have received two hours of culturally responsive instruction, four, we have four main curriculum writers that are at the CAO and so they have continued to receive and stay updated on their, um, culturally responsive instruction, um, professional learning. For this one, this particular measurement, for the first two, it's strictly taken from professional development logs that are, um, provided for the beginning of the school year. Each, uh, individual has the opportunity, I should say, teachers and administrators to participate in a two-hour culturally responsive professional development training that is asynchronous, they take it on their own. And then they indicate whether or not they've taken the, um, professional development. So based upon the professional development logs for, um, last year, ninety-eight, ninety-eight percent of teachers said they completed that, uh, training. And then seventy-one percent of our administrative staff and staff administrators, and that would be head administrators, um, in our schools, completed that professional development log, or professional development based upon the logs. And then as far as non-instructional staff, um, last year there was, uh, zero percent who, um, completed culturally responsive instruction training from the CAO. And so that means that, for, as far as the data that I have, that's indicated zero percent, but it does not mean that they did not complete any professional development relating to cultural responsive instruction. And then we discontinued creating modules for culturally responsive instruction. So that's why you see NA for that particular data set.
Can I ask a question, is that cumulative, like, if a hundred percent in twenty-twenty-two took it, did they have to retake it?
Yes.
Is there a new, okay.
Every year. So for youth leadership and stewardship, again, of the question that we were looking at on the Panorama survey was diversity and inclusion. Again, we did not collect the information or data in the spring of twenty-twenty-five, we will resume in the spring of twenty-twenty-six. For this particular measurement, uh, for Winchester Public Schools, grades three through five, we have trend data beginning in, um, school year eighteen going through last school year of twenty-five in five core areas, which is outlined in policy AH equity as far as needing to be, um, identified and data disaggregated about, um, teacher and student relationships, belonging, climate, safety, and engagement. And so based upon the data that we collected for the spring, um, for students in grades three to five, you can see in, um, school year twenty-five that the majority of all of the areas increased across the board and that would be basically our elementary schools. When this is broken down by demographic group, for Winchester Public Schools overall, we, uh, saw increases. Um, the green represents the increases and positive responses in those respective areas based upon the student demographic. One area that was added, this, for this report that has not been included in previous reports was the gifted column. And however, when I went back and looked at data from last year for the gift students who ident, are identified as gifted and, um, for this year compared the two, um, the gifted, uh, column has seen the most, um, consistent increase in the areas that are listed as far as relationships, belonging, climate, safety, and engagement. And I thought that was worth noting. This year, um, what is included is a breakdown by school as far as their respective, um, totals. So, uh, so this particular measurement for youth leadership and stewardship is grades three through five. So we have a unique situation where our four elementary schools are grades three through four. And as you can see by the data, uh, this is what each respective school, um, students responded as far as positive response in those various areas. And then we have, um, Daniel Morgan Intermediate School, who they have a unique situation in that they are grades, uh, they have our fifth grade students. So they had, they're included in the grades three through five, but then they also are included in our sixth grade students, our grades six through twelve. So I put Daniel Morgan Middle School here to demonstrate that the fifth grade only positive response. And so some of the things that we want to notice even here or discuss potentially is just with the, the whole, you can see the difference in the scores. Um, I know there's been discussion about transitions and, um, potentially going to the fifth grade from elementary school. So that could be some of the explanation for, uh, some of the scores. But what you don't see in this information is that Daniel Morgan's scores, uh, went significantly, they significantly increased from the previous year, significantly in every area. So that's...
I'm sorry, if I can just, what, is there something that you can attribute that to? Is there something that we're doing differently or?
I would say school climate and culture administration and leadership. That's my perspective, my professional opinion. And they, and they have made, uh, they are making great, taking great effort and making great strides in addressing these areas. So I am confident that we'll only see this increase. As far as youth leadership and stewardship, so since Daniel Morg, or Daniel Morgan Intermediate School is unique, as I mentioned, so I'm showing you grade five and then grade six because they are, to show that school as an entirety and their completeness, but then there's one other difference about, um, the six through twelve data that I want to share with you this evening as well. Daniel Morgan Intermediate School for grade six was the only school that took the Panorama in its historical state. And what I mean by its historical state, by answering these five questions. Because what was different is that grades seven through twelve, they, um, well, let me pause. So com- comparing, however, Daniel Morgan's, um, intermediate sixth grade data across ten, across trend data, when the entirety of grades six through twelve were included, as you can see, there still are increases. So, um, school year eighteen through twenty-four included, um, all students six through twelve, whereas, um, fiscal year or school year twenty-five just included sixth grade. Okay? And so what was different with grades seven through twelve is that students in those grades, they, um, ended up taking a different, answering different questions in those four categories. And then they answered that question for every one of their teachers, so it was based upon the classroom level. So if you notice, Winchester Public Schools, it says, "Our responses, seven thousand nine hundred and seventy." That's because students had multiple responses to, um, based upon whatever teacher, whatever teacher they had. And so then the other aspect, I'm going to backtrack for just a moment. So notice, at the classroom level, the scores are in their seventies, um, district-wide. And then, uh, as far as Daniel Morgan Middle School and John Hanley, they're in the seventies, they're in the, um, high sixties. But when I backtrack and you look at when students answered these questions collectively at the school, it was significantly lower. So as students are, um, giving information and feedback about their specific teacher, it raises their persp, their positive response, um, increased. And then these results were given to teachers so that they could have that feedback directly. Whereas, when it was collectively like this, this is school-wide and maybe teachers could accept it or maybe they would say, well, that's not me, or maybe it is me, but this, they could not be denied. Family engagement and community collaboration, there are four areas and this was the response over the trend data from fiscal year, I keep saying fiscal year, school year, eighteen through twenty-five. As far as barriers to engagement is... As far as barriers to engagement is concerned, when I looked at the data, as far as Winchester Public Schools is concerned, the most, the least barrier, the smallest barrier was people's or families' perception of families. I'm going to look at my notes so I'll get it right. The smallest barrier was negative memories of your own school experience. That was the smallest barrier. So sometimes, I'm going to speak for myself, I may say, "Well, families may not feel comfortable coming to school because of their own experiences." Based upon the participants who responded to this information, that was not true. But the largest barrier for family barriers to engagement was parent schedules. They felt and said and stated, "My schedule is, I'm just too busy." And I don't want to, I said that in a way that may, may seem flippant, but it's that there's, they have a busy schedule. And so then the other thing too, as far as that is concerned, barriers to engagement, I just found that helpful, especially as I'm moving more in my role to family engagement, that is very helpful to understand how parents may want to be more involved, but their schedules are not allowing. And the barrier to engagement, the highest or the smallest barrier may have fluctuated across schools, but for every school, the lowest barrier and the one that had the great, greatest impact was parent schedule. For this information that's in front of you, school-wide, it gives you information across our schools, what parents have identified as far as their feedback is concerned, barriers to engagement, family support, school climate, and communication.
So does this mean that the thing that's impacting family engagement and community collaboration least is barriers to engagement? But you might say these numbers are lower, like fifty, sixty percents for communication. So does that mean that families' perceptions on how schools communicate with them is the biggest issue with family engagement? Or I, I'm trying to understand how to interpret this data.
So if we're looking at the data in front of you, I'm going to choose a school, Frederick Douglass. So if we look straight down their data, barriers to engagement, family support, school climate, and communication, the percentage that had the lowest positive response was family support. Now that sounds like, when you initially look at that and read it, it may sound like that the schools aren't supporting families, but it's actually the opposite. It's how families feel like they are supporting their student. So some of the questions under family support were, "Do you talk to your child at home about their work? Do you talk, do you know who your friends, do you know who your children's friends are?" Things of that nature. And so for this, they felt that seventy-three percent of the individuals who answered this said, "I feel supportive. This is not a problem for me." So the other side are the individuals who said, "Oh yeah, this is a problem." But.
I'm, I'm looking at the number of responses you got, which is the N-number up at the top.
Yes.
So I don't know, it would be interesting to know percent of families that are responding to this because, because you're going to have highly engaged parents who are answering your survey. So I'm not sure how much we can, you know, draw from that.
Well, my philosophy, and I thought about this because I thought maybe this question would surface, is that although if we think about the number of students who are in any school and then the families who responded, this still gives us a snapshot and a starting point of where we can actually consider ways to improve and then maintain what we're, what's happening in the perception that families have. So yes, would we like more parents to respond? Absolutely. The flip side is eighty-nine, and Frederick Douglass did. So we can start and use that information.
Well, they probably have too busy scheduling.
Yeah, I mean, and it's all connected.
I mean, and I understand that. They're very busy. Families are very busy.
And just, I'm going to do a plug. It's not in this presentation, but just recently met with, Tim Peterson allowed me to participate in her family liaison meeting. And they are, I think they are some of the people I want to talk to the most about engaging families because they, they are, they do this well. And one of the things they said was just parent schedules and just overall, this is not one school, what I'm about to say, it's just the amount of information received can sometimes be overwhelming.
Actually, I heard that complaint when I was campaigning, that there's such a flood of information coming from the schools in addition to probably what they are getting from their work life and everything else. It's hard to keep track of all of it.
And just as it, like, I'll pick one, sorry to pick somebody in the back, principals. What's our family count at Hanley? Yeah, like, I go to the student count, right? So I'm trying to get the percentage of respondents to the survey, I guess is where I'm going.
I don't get a significant amount of families going out for survey.
Okay.
It's typically been that way since I've been there, I'll be very honest. At least typically I will tell you probably a little hundred sometimes, what I get from families. And we have, you know, if we're thirteen hundred students.
Yeah, and one of the things I do at work, surveys as well, and that's kind of consistent with a response on a general survey. So just adding that for context. Sorry to put you on the spot.
Oh. And so the remaining Policy AH Equity areas are actually, we have several individuals present throughout the school year. And so instead of standing here and giving you, repeating the information that they give to you, those are the reports that provide the remaining data points for those various areas. And Dr. Van Hugelham will be presenting the annual, annual report on November the twenty-fourth. So that's forthcoming. Looking forward, how are we going to address these various areas and continue to support the areas, the culturally responsive framework? And in that framework, there is a community engagement component, which will be focused upon more this school year. The Human Restoration Project, which I spoke to you about the last time that I presented to you for youth leadership and stewardship, that's conducting empathy interviews to get more anecdotal data from students or more not anecdotal qualitative. So interviews, voice. The Students' Face Advisory Council is doing a needs assessment for schools, and we're in the process of facilitating that. And then as far as diverse recruitment, continue with recruitment events and then reducing disparities and opportunity gaps, MTSS, which family engagement will be under that umbrella as well. And then just a continue, a continued presentation or explanation for the implementation plan for the framework. Any questions?
If I could just add two things to Dr. Walker's presentation. Dr. Walker, you did a fantastic job, but I just want to reiterate the slide that has the fifth and sixth grade data side by side. And Dr. Walker mentioned this, but I think it's important to remember that this is a big challenge. Fifth grade is a big challenge when you're coming from four different elementary schools for students to feel like they belong. And so that's one explanation of the fifth grade data, but I think an explanation of the sixth grade data is also, that's a typical middle school grade in most all schools. So I feel like in both grade levels, there's a question of where they belong. You know, a lot of times we lump sixth graders in with the middle school with sports and the different things. So I just want to highlight for the board my perspective of this slide and an explanation of that. And I know it's something that our administrative team at Daniel Morgan works very hard on to make them feel like they belong, but it is a challenge, given developmentally, how students at that age, and of course, just that difference in, "Am I a middle schooler? Am I an intermediate school?" You know, that, that's difficult. So I wanted to highlight that. I also wanted to highlight the teacher surveys that Ms. O'Donnell and Ms. Brathwaite are giving two times a year for the board. They're giving them in the fall because remember, we're on block schedule. So we want to make sure we get feedback on every single teacher that those students have in grade seven through twelve. And the helpful part of that is, I always remind teachers that we really need to know how our students feel. Their input is extremely powerful and a good reflection tool for us as educators to consider our own practice. And we feel like, to Dr. Walker's point, we're getting much more valuable data this way, and they are now able to use that in observation meetings with teachers. You know, depending on where their percentage is and talk about how their students are feeling, and they're able to reflect upon that and then take that under consideration as they move forward. So I just wanted to highlight both of those things for the board because I know that we've had discussion about grades five and six, but also we're very excited that we've started giving those seven through twelve grade surveys more often. Because if you remember, our Panorama data historically in those grades has not been very strong. So we wanted to make sure we were getting more information so we can figure out exactly why. Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions? Or Dr. Walker?
I'm really happy to see this data and see that it is trending in a positive direction. I thank you for your work in that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Great presentation. All right, Ms. Buckley, I believe you are up next. And a reminder to the board on this one, there's a lot of information in here. You've had time to review it, so let's, we can, we can go as deep in this as you want, but you've seen this since Thursday, I believe, so.
All right. Thank you. I'm very excited to have all of our school principals with us this evening. They're going to be supporting me through this presentation. I also, just before we get started, wanted to thank our cabinet, who's sitting behind us, who collaborated on the division support plan and with the schools on their support plans as well. This is truly a team effort, so I just wanted to make sure that I highlight everybody that contributed to it. I want to just remind the school board, and I know some of you may not have been with us, I am required to present this to you before November one, as you saw in the memo. I do want to let you know that we were told that we would get a new template for this in September, and we are still waiting. So I am knowingly presenting this to you on the template that I have, but please recognize it could change as a lot of things at the state level are changing. And I'm going to present to you tonight what I know, and just be prepared that these are flexible, fluid documents. We may have to take everything we have and put it on a new template. So just wanted to have full disclosure about that. But you will see, if you look through this presentation, you will see that the Performance and Support Framework, which was new last year, includes four domains of support, academic, staffing, organizational learning, and school climate. And we'll talk a little bit more about what that means as we continue. The other piece about the CSSPs is that, and I'm sorry, that stands for Comprehensive School Support Plan, is that our schools do something called a needs assessment. And with the needs assessment, then they, they start at step one, and they gather, just like you would predict, gather and analyze the data that they have, figure out what their problem is, conduct the root cause analysis, and then they prioritize those needs and they develop the goals that you're going to see in their plan today. So one thing I want to highlight about these support plans is that you're not going to see everything our schools do well, okay? The state has encouraged us to identify our problem areas in our data throughout the year, which can change. You all know we give quarterly assessments, and we have state assessments in the fall, and the high school has SOL data mid-year. So we are encouraged to revise our plan throughout the course of the year. So what you see today may not be what you see in two weeks because we want school leadership teams actively revising and involved with their plans. So on the domains and focus areas, Winchester Public Schools has recognized that while there could be a lot of different buckets under each domain, we prioritize under the academic domain, and you'll see this throughout our, our Division Support Plan and our school support plans, personalized instructional support for students under academics, staff retention, we talk a lot about that, under staffing, professional development, under organizational learning, and underschool climate, attendance, student behavior, and discipline. And I have added there on-time graduation rate. That could also go under academics, but we also recognize that attendance and behavior is often a barrier, just like academics. So I felt like it could go either in either domain, but for purposes of tonight, it's underschool climate. I also have highlighted some of our Elevate 2030 objectives under learners and under staff that I feel like are really highlighted in our plan. There are other goals that we touch upon, but I would say the ones that we touch upon the most impact our learners and our staff, okay? So as we get into our plan, you're going to see that we really prioritize tier-one instruction and also regular data cycles. So once I get to the plan, this will make a little more sense, but just on this slide, that's the connection. On this slide, we talk about leadership and school quality teams. Those are your school leadership teams that are making a lot of decisions on the priorities of the school. So wanted to be sure to include this because it is your school leadership team or school quality team that develops the plans that you're seeing at the school level. And then staff capacity and agency. This is where the professional learning, the coaching, the academic reviews that I'm going to talk about shortly, and the professional development that we provide to our team is cyclical on this slide. And then on this one, we prioritize those, our staff. How are we going to retain our staff? What are we going to do benefits-wise? And how do we support that work-life balance for them? Because we know that they have to be very happy in the workplace in order to perform optimally. So you'll see in domain two, the staffing supports that's related to this slide. Any questions before I go on? Okay. So before I get into this presentation, I'm going to front-load you all with some information about the division. And the purpose of that is to give you information as to why we developed the plans like we did. I want to be clear that this data is preliminary. The state is still validating these results. It has not been public. But I want to give the board some idea. We have never gotten to October twenty-seventh in my, in the time that I've been in Virginia schools and not had finalized data. So we want to make sure you all are aware of our performance data and then how we are developing our plans as a result. Now, this slide is what we predicted. We have John Hanley High School as a distinguished school, and I remember that ninety to one hundred, anywhere in there, and I'm going to tell you how we got to that score shortly, okay? The on-track schools, Frederick Douglass, Garland Quarles, John Kerr, and Daniel Morgan Middle. And then off-track, which we predicted when we had this data back in the spring, Virginia Avenue and Daniel Morgan Intermediate. And once we get into those performance frameworks, which we'll do in just a few minutes when we get to the school plans, you will see how close our schools are to being on track. So the Division Support Plan, we are very proud of the Division Support Plan. As I mentioned, it's been a team effort. In the top right corner, you're going to see our Division Literacy Plan. It's not something I'm going to highlight tonight. The board approved this plan a long time ago, but we are required to include it in our Division Support Plan. So it does support particularly the grade-three reading goal that you're going to see under academic support. The academic support domain, you all know, we've been talking about grade-three reading as a concern. There's a lot of research behind kids that are reading on grade level at that point. So we felt as a division, we needed to make a commitment to that. So you're going to see that prioritized in our goal as well as cyclical academic reviews, which we have, the instruction team has been doing for the last three weeks and will continue to do in the spring. They have been very beneficial, I think, for all of our schools and for our division instruction team in just learning more information and then being able to better focus our professional development. Under the staffing domain, we're focusing on employee turnover, and we're also focusing on high school enrollment and Teach for Tomorrow. And you're going to see evidence of that in some of our elementary school plans because many of our elementary schools are hosting students that want to be teachers for observations and so they can come in and get real-world experience. So I hope you'll make that connection as we go through the plans. And then finally, in the school climate domain, domain four, we're focusing on chronic absenteeism and PBIS implementation. PBIS implementation is not new. We've been working on it for several years. Most of our schools have met the eighty percent fidelity that's required for tier-two implementation and tier-three. So that will be something that we hope to sustain. And also, we're always working on chronic absenteeism. It was a topic today at our Assistant Principals Meeting, and it's something we're constantly working to improve because we know it impacts every area of a student's outcomes. So that is also evident in our plan. And you're going to see school alignment with this plan as well as we go through each school. I'm going to ask Ms. Mastel to come on up. I did ask the principals to participate with me this evening. I have been somewhat uncomfortable over the years in talking about their plan without them present. And so because it is their job to implement their plan in the school and because they developed it, I kind of felt like they needed to be present. and because they developed it, I kind of felt like they needed to be present. Just so I can explain everything that's on this slide, if you click on the link here, which I will not do, their entire plan will come up, okay, for you to review. What I did on the right was highlighted everything in their plan, and then the highlighted strategy at the bottom is going to be something that I asked the principals, as a division, we came up with seven topics that are very important to us, and I asked each principal to discuss how that impacts their school-based plan. So I'm going to go ahead and explain the performance framework to you all in detail on this slide, and then if you have any questions as we go on. 84.52 is their performance framework score at the top here. The way that you get that number is you add everything in this column under the index value, okay? And to get that index value, you're going to divide the points earned with your students, what's in the students column, and you're going to get this, this right here. This, I'm circling, my eyes aren't very good, guys. And then you're going to divide it by the weight, and you're going to get that index value. Is the math mathing?
Yeah.
Okay. So I just wanted to explain to you how we're getting that number already on the right, and then that all totals the performance category. And if you come straight over in that mastery I put on the left side, reading performance, math performance, and ELL progress, that adds up to 55.92, which is your mastery portion. If you all remember the framework from last year, then you have your growth portion and then your readiness. Just wanted to make sure everybody understands how that's calculated. And so right now, this data is being updated, and it's being validated by the state. It is possible that it could change. But we believe we've sent a lot of corrections in based on our own internal data, and we believe it's very, very, very close to being accurate. And right now, I will go ahead and let Ms. Mastel talk about how she incorporates the science of reading, and particularly bookworms, into her daily school schedule.
Thank you, Ms. Buckley. Yeah, so I just wanted to share with you how some of these shifts and implementations have really helped us reach our goal in our reading. So since our shift to our science of reading, we've had tremendous growth in students' reading success and successfully helped us meet our reading goal. The implementation of bookworms has supported the work by providing a structured reading block each day that includes shared reading, where all students are able to participate in tier-one instruction and are all exposed to on-grade-level text. During this time, students build essential skills like vocabulary fluency and comprehension. In addition to that, each day, they have a daily DI block, which allows them to have more differentiated instruction, giving students interventions, remediations, and enrichment based on their individual needs. This block also provides designated times for students to receive additional support from reading specialists to ensure that all students are getting all the support and the help that they need. The implementation of the bookworms curriculum has been a part and has helped us go from a 61% pass rate overall in reading during the 2023-2024 school year up to a 74% overall pass rate in the 24-25 school year. So our goal moving forward is that kind of taking into consideration, another thing that's still not final, but some expected increase in cut scores this year. Our goal is really to try to maintain that 74% pass rate with the higher expectations.
Thank you. Thank you. I will say, you know, with the academic reviews, we've done one at John Kerr and Virginia Avenue, and we got, we have been intimately involved with the bookworms resource. And I will say, you have to remember that the curriculum is what the state says we have to teach. Bookworms is the tool that we use to meet that. So I will say it is very comprehensive. I know our teachers are still learning. We implemented this last year, and I know it has been a big challenge for all of our schools to figure out, you know, how to make that most impactful to our students and how to learn it themselves. Because when you're learning a curriculum on the fly, like I feel like we were doing last year, I know that they feel much more confident in implementing that this year. Thank you, Ms. Mastel. Any questions for Frederick Douglass? Ms. DiMarco, you join me? And the Quarles score, same place, 85.06, they were our highest-performing elementary school, so kudos to them. One thing I did want to point out for you all is that this 9.1 on ELL progress, that was out of a maximum of 10. So very high-performing ELL instruction there, which is why I asked Ms. DiMarco tonight if she could highlight how they're implementing instruction in her school, specific to English language learners, because that is something, if you look at our other schools, we're leaving points on the table, as Dr. Van Huukilam says. So if, Ms. DiMarco, if you'd share with us what Quarles is doing in that regard.
Sure. Thank you, Ms. Buckley. So one area we will continue to focus on in our English, is our English learners' progress. While we celebrate a tremendous growth in this area based on our recent performance data, it remains a key focus in our comprehensive school support plan. Currently, Quarles serves 52 students at the entering proficiency level, 16 emerging, and 32 at the developing level, and then 27 at expanding. So each student's progress goals are determined using their baseline WEDA data, as well as their grade-level bands. To maximize student learning, teachers develop both academic and learning goals, along with language goals tailored to each student. So our goal is for lesson plans to include documented scaffolds, as well as instructional strategies that are aligned with their WEDA proficiency levels, and for 90% of our L students to show measurable growth in accessing grade-level content, as demonstrated by their classroom performance and their WEDA data. Using the Elevations Platform, which is what the ESOL teachers have access to, our ESOL teachers are to, able to review each English learner's can-do descriptors, to then embed appropriate scaffolds and instructional strategies that are aligned with all four domains, language domains. So we have two literacy domains of reading and writing, and then two oral language domains of listening and speaking. The key to maximize this implementation for our ESOL, is for our ESOL teachers to work closely with their classroom teachers, to ensure alignment of strategies and have a better understanding of those WEDA can-do descriptors once the students have met those language goals. This integration is for both the English L teacher and for the general education teachers to utilize, to support student growth and progress, literacy development, and overall language progress. So that was something we felt like we did well last year and something we want to continue to work on this upcoming year.
Anything else?
No, thank you very much.
All right. John Kerr, Ms. Pryor. And so John Kerr, 83.01, on track. And I know that, you know, just to point out, that ELL progress goal, so you know, there's several points right there that, if you look at our other schools in that particular area, would put them on track. Now, there are other things too, proficiency and things like that as well, but yeah, just, I wanted to say just kudos to Quarles for maximizing their points in that particular category, because you recognize that, you know, growth is not something that's always guaranteed, and we have a new measure going into this year, which will be hard for us to predict in terms of what the VDOE will tell us as the measurement tool for that. But back to Kerr, 83.01, on track. I know that Ms. Pryor is going to be very pleased with her chronic absenteeism effort last year. She's going to talk to you all a little bit about what she did to improve the attendance rate at John Kerr, which was a level two going into last year. So if you remember the old accreditation system, the level one, the level two, and the level three, I think you were like 16, 17, 17% of their students were chronically absent. So a big attendance recovery effort there, and I know that, as you can see, they got a lot of points in that readiness category because last year, and they're saying this year too, chronic absenteeism is going to be all of the points for elementary. So I will let her tell you how she accomplished that.
Thank you, Ms. Buckley. So I am pleased to share an update on our continued progress in reducing chronic absenteeism at John Kerr. Over the past several years, we've seen steady, measurable improvement, even as enrollment and post-pandemic attendance patterns shifted. Our three-year trend tells the story very clearly. Chronic absenteeism was 16.4% in '22-'23, 17% in '23-'24, and 15.4% in '24-'25. Our early rate this year is 13.32%, and while that still remains a concern, this is a downward trend that represents sustained progress and reflects the impact of intentional strategies such as an early parent outreach, consistent implementation of our PBIS framework, and targeted student supports through counseling and attendance recovery efforts. In '24-'25, we did reach a major milestone, reducing our chronic absenteeism rate to 9.4% after recoupment, and successfully meeting both the state benchmark and our comprehensive school support plan goal to maintain a rate of less than 10%. Our target this year is to move beyond that threshold, reducing chronic absenteeism below 9% through continued family partnerships, expanded attendance recovery opportunities, and small group counseling supports for students that continue to have ongoing attendance barriers. While challenges such as family mobility, transportation, and health-related absences do persist, our message remains consistent. When students feel connected, supported, and valued, they show up. The data affirms that our collective efforts with staff, families, and students are working, and we thank you for your continued support as we ensure that every Cardinal, every day, is present, engaged, and learning.
Thank you, Kim. Dr. Plousta, she's going to talk about MTSS, and you did see evidence of MTSS in Dr. Walker's presentation as well. I just wanted to highlight that, that is one area we feel like Virginia Avenue does a fantastic job in, so I asked her to talk about that tonight, their identification of students in tier-two and tier-three. I'm not going to talk a lot about this, they were off-track, she's aware of that. I know the whole school's in a full-court press to not be in that same shape at the end of this year. As I mentioned, we did have an academic review there last week, last week, and I will say that their staff is very motivated to turn this around and to improve these index values that can, as I mentioned, one little area of improvement can push them over 80. So I know that they are very focused on doing that, and I'm going to let Dr. Plousta talk about her MTSS framework.
I feel like I've done a lot of talking.
You have, but that's okay.
So our school's primary focus is on student growth and success, both academically and behaviorally, which is guided by our multi-tiered systems of supports. MTSS is a data-driven framework that ensures all students get the support they need when they need it. We use universal screening data like AIMS Web or the NumberSense Screener in reading and math to identify students as tier-one, which means they're on track, or tier-two and three, they are at risk. Teachers, TAs, and specialists then provide systematic differentiated interventions and frequently progress monitor the student growth. If a student is not showing growth, we then take that data to our MTSS meeting, which we have monthly, and we revise the intervention, whether that's the type of intervention, the frequency, or the size of the group. We continue to progress monitor to look for those improvements. Behaviorally, we use PBIS as our school-wide tier-one, and the MTSS process guides students to more focus tier-two groups with a counselor or tier-three behavior plans, and it also addresses chronic absenteeism. Ultimately, MTSS is a responsive, equitable system that ties all of our efforts back to our goal of ensuring every student is successful. And this is how we continue to show growth for all of our students academically, behaviorally, and through attendance. Questions for me, because I know there may be some.
Thank you, Dr. Plousta. Thank you, thank you. Ms. DeGiovanni. All right. So DMIS also barely off-track here, 77.86. And if you all remember, the year before, they did have a level three, and they were federally identified, so we knew, even with strong improvement, they may not make it. Made great strides, and I know they're really focused on improving this score this year as well. We also did an academic review at Daniel Morgan Intermediate three weeks ago, and so I know their team also is working very, very hard. Ms. DeGiovanni is going to talk about PBIS this evening. They've done a wonderful job with their PBIS framework, so I wanted her to share a little bit about what that looks like.
So we have continued to use PBIS to guide our work in creating a safe, positive, and inclusive school climate, and as Dr. Plousta just talked about, we use the MTSS framework as well to guide that in a tiered approach. We really started our work over the summer when we decided as a campus to adopt Hanley's behavior expectations. As was mentioned earlier, there are a lot of very quick transitions once students reach us, and so we felt that continuity would be beneficial for the division. We also had our first-ever parent orientation at the end of the summer before school started, and we were able to share behavior expectations with parents so that they had a very clear vision of what we share with our students. As part of our tier-one with the students, we moved forward with teaching lessons at the beginning of the year, so they were very explicitly taught what behaviors we would like to see. When we are not seeing some of those behaviors, we move into tier-two, and through the MTSS process, we review data and we plan targeted interventions. We also this year have incorporated a pride room, which is beneficial for students with disabilities who need a structured space for breaks and specific lessons in social skills and other behavior coaching. With all that said, we also provide a lot of positive reinforcements to students. As was mentioned earlier, we do have a bowling trip coming up on Friday that students are very excited about, and that is for positive behavior as well as attendance.
Thank you, Ally. All right. Thank you. And I'm going to have Ms. O'Donnell join me for the middle school plan. Ms. O'Donnell will be highlighting math workshop, and her school, 82.26. And the one thing I wanted to point out about the middle school is, you'll remember, they have the advanced coursework. And because we have algebra, we were able to capitalize on all 10 points that were available. So we're waiting to hear from the state in regards to history and science programming and what that looks like for advanced coursework within the framework, but we still don't know. So right now, we're under the impression that algebra is still the only subject that will count in that metric. So she is going to highlight math workshop and how they use that at the middle school. You'll also remember that the middle school has historically had really good data coming out of the math department. Number one in the state last year, Ms. O'Donnell? Yes, number one in the state last year in terms of growth, correct? Was the growth part of the math that was very impressive for the middle school. So I'll turn it over to her and let her talk about math workshop.
Thank you. So Daniel Morgan, we've worked to intentionally align our math instruction through the implementation of a math workshop model. So this model allows teachers to deliver rigorous, standard-spaced instruction while differentiating to meet the needs of all of our learners. Each class begins with a whole-group mini-lesson focused on grade-level content and key math concepts. During this time, teachers introduce or model strategies connected to the standards, ensuring that every student is exposed to the core grade-level expectations. Following that mini-lesson, students rotate through targeted small-group instruction, where teachers provide remediation, reteaching, or extension based on formative assessment data. This structure allows instruction to be responsive and meet the needs of all of our students. In addition, we do have a protected 30-minute daily intervention and extension block. During that time, students participate in research-based interventions and extension activities designed to target specific skill deficits and extend learning beyond grade-level standards. So our goal is clear, we want to create a math learning environment that is aligned, differentiated, and responsive, where all students can experience success. We've been thankful to have a lot of math success over a number of years.
Thank you, Ms. O'Donnell.
Sure.
All right. And finally, John Hanley High School, our one distinguished school. You will note that the high school framework does not have a growth component. And so one thing I did want to highlight on their framework is that the 3E framework, which is your CTE portion, they scored 28.18 out of 30 points. So that is very impressive and should be a tribute to our Innovation Center, but not just our Innovation Center. We also have CTE teachers that are on the Hanley campus, students that were completers in CTE and our advanced coursework, and all those things that go into that particular score at Hanley are so very impressive, and we're so proud that they, that they were able to score as a distinguished school. So I'll ask Ms. Brathwaite to come up and talk about the on-time graduation rate. You might remember, a few years ago, we were in the 87, 86% and just very chipping away the last few years. Last year, we were roughly at 92%. Right now, we're at 91.1, no, 91.74, this says 73, so depending on which day you're looking at the VDOE data. We're hopeful that it would flip to 92. We did send in some corrections, which would be on par with the state of Virginia, so that would be very impressive. John Hanley, for a long time, has not been able to match that state performance in terms of on-time graduation rate. They've worked really hard to improve that. So I'll let her share what their teams are doing to make sure we graduate students on time.
Good evening, members of the board. Over the past three years, John Hanley High School has demonstrated a steady rise in its on-time graduation rate, improving from 87.1% in 2022 to 92% in 2024. This five-point gain reflects the power of consistent, system-wide supports and procedures that keep every student on track towards graduation. By establishing clear accountability through our success teams, counselor-tracking systems, and division-level oversight, the school has transformed- the school has transformed how it identifies and intervenes for at-risk students. A central driver of this success is staff measure number one, which ensures that school counselors maintain and update every student's academic and career plan each semester. Counselors meet individually with students to monitor progress, adjust graduation plans, and engage families in the process. In addition, the success team meets bi-weekly to review academic, attendance, and behavior data for all students, ensuring that interventions are quickly assigned and monitored. Division and school leadership teams reinforce this process through monthly on-time graduation rate review meetings, aligning resources and sharing progress data across departments. Finally, the success team recognizes student milestones, such as credit recovery completions, attendance improvements, and SOL achievements at the end of each quarter, reinforcing a culture of success and perseverance. Collectively, these actions have established a cycle of monitoring, communication, and celebration that connects staff procedures directly to improved outcomes. The data shows that when systems of accountability are consistently implemented, students benefit from timely supports, stronger relationships with counselors and teachers, and a clearer pathway to graduation. The upward trend from eighty-seven point one to ninety-two percent is more than a statistic. It is evidence that intentional procedures and shared responsibility equate to student success. Thank you.
And just to give the board a quick idea, and I'll be brief. I know this has been a longer presentation. There is a monthly report that they review. So if a student goes to another school division, I'm just going to give you an example. And the registrar, whoever's enrolling the student, gives them a different, something called a state testing ID, okay? They become a new student in the state of Virginia. So they never left us on their report. So we have to make a call, get them to merge STI, so that student does not count against us. Just like if a student leaves us and doesn't enroll in another school. Until they enroll in another school, we're able to verify where they're located, which sometimes becomes very problematic if they don't enroll in another school division. They literally have to track them down. And so we're talking about, you know, few tenths of a point for every child that we find or every child that they track down, which becomes a monthly effort on the part of this team, because we don't want to wait until May, when all this is due in June and July, to try to locate kids that have been missing for six and seven, sometimes a year. Because it, we have found that many kids were coded wrong two and three years ago. And so, once we figure out they were coded, we can retroactively submit them for a correction, which retroactively fixes our data. It's, I don't know that people truly understand the amount of effort it takes for these five percentage points to go up, but it literally is about tracking down every single child and figuring out where they are and what they're doing so that they can, we can count them accordingly.
Seems like something the state should have a database on movement of children.
So they do, so we get a, we get something called an OGR report, which is on-time graduation. And that's live information that's directly out of our student information system for all students that are in that particular cohort. And so, it, we can make a correction in our student information system, and it refreshes often. So if they enroll somewhere else in the state of Virginia, but if they don't, we have to figure that out. So just a challenge. I just wanted to, you know, explain, it's a pretty complicated procedure that takes a great deal of effort. And this last slide is simply to remind you all that there is ongoing revision as it relates to both the division support plan and the comprehensive school support plans. We're all encouraged to review and revisit and revise very often throughout the year. It should be a fluid document. This past year, principals were able just to adjust based on their data at the end of the year instead of reimagining a new plan, which is really nice. So just don't be surprised if you see minor changes to the plans. We will put them on our websites. So they could look slightly different depending on the time that you look at them. Any questions for me?
I have a clarifying question. So you are required to report by November first the plans, right? Based on data that you don't yet
Correct.
have verified from the state. Okay. I just wanted to make sure I understood that.
I'm trying to follow the rules, Mary.
I know, I know. And I'm trying to figure out the rules.
We were supposed to have updated templates into September. And so, we finally, I finally just said to principals, we have to continue with some sort of plan on paper. So we're going to continue as if this is the process. Sure.
I got a question.
Sure.
So when you look at, like, John Kerr talked about, talked about, like, chronic absenteeism and the programs that have been implemented there, are those same programs being implemented at other elementary schools? And it's just different demographics and it's not working as well? Or is it different programs that are not as successful?
I would say, in large part, all of our programs have been successful. We saw a chronic absenteeism decrease at pretty much every school. I think Hanley was very comparable with the attendance recovery. But all of our schools have intentionally planned for attendance recovery, and the identification of those students has to be strategic. You know, we can't always force a child to say after-school, so we have to get creative sometimes. But I would say, yeah, every school has that programming. Ms. Pryor highlighted it for you this evening, but it's in every single school plan for attendance.
Because, like, what I was getting at too is, like, if you look at Quarles, like, their ELL progress is really solid. And so I just am wondering, like, where the differ, like, why some schools are differing more than others and how that.
So while we recognize there are best practices that reach all of our schools, we also recognize that some of our schools are very unique. And as a result, we've had to disproportionately support in terms of professional development this year. Virginia Avenue and Daniel Morgan Intermediate are getting a little more from Central Office in terms of school-based support, because you see that our data supports that. So whereas we used to use a one-size-fits-all model, we're really starting to individualize that professional development based on specific school needs.
All right, that makes sense. Anyone else? Good? Thanks, Ms. Buckley.
Sure.
Now, the exciting appropriations part. Ms. McDonald. Pretty straightforward here.
Good evening.
I just got a curveball in here I don't know about.
You have before you, seeking approval for the attached resolution before you regarding FY twenty-six amendment, budget amendments. These budget amendments included, include the operating carry-forward funds from FY twenty-five of one million eight hundred and two thousand eight hundred and ninety dollars, of which two hundred thousand is being amended to the textbook fund and one million six hundred and two, eight hundred and ninety to our CIP Construction and Progress Fund for FY twenty-six uses. The rest of the funding you have before you, it's spelled out into each category in regards. So if I'll just entertain any questions you have, since you've had this before you.
Any questions? That's all. We do this every year about this time.
Yes. We do this in October of every year, and then again in April.
And maybe you just mentioned what, what's our carry-forward this year?
Our carry-forward this year is, from FY twenty-five, is a million eight hundred and two, eight hundred and ninety thousand. And the balance of this is new funds that we weren't aware that we would have, that were in our original budget, and also some budgeted additional state funds. You know, we kind of do our budget where we approve our budget. The city approves our budget, and then the state approves their budget. And so this is bringing us up to what the state finally approved in June, those additional state funds. Those represent nine hundred and sixty-one thousand nine hundred and sixteen dollars to our school operating fund and twelve thousand nine hundred and fifty-seven to our school activity fund.
Right. Any questions? Any discussion? Entertaining motion?
Motion to approve resolution for carry-forward from FY twenty-five to FY twenty-six and new FY twenty-six funds.
Got a motion by Ms. Harris. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Tiedrow. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Did that one right, Carrie.
Thank you.
We do have a need for a closed session tonight.